This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice that this meeting was provided to the home needs to be the Starlager, the Haven Park Planets on January 8th, 2025, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on Haven Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law by exit to my right and left of council chambers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, Mayor Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember George.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Council President Kinchron.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pistone.
Here.
Councilmember Vargas.
Here.
Borough Attorney Renault.
Here.
Borough Administrator Bear.
Here.
Borough Planner Chris.
Here.
Okay, tonight is a work session and discussion items is going to be 332 Raritan Avenue, the former Rite Aid. It's 424 Redevelopment Plan Amendment. And I'm sorry to take you away.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everybody. It's a redevelopment-esque themed meeting tonight, so sorry in advance that I have to change that. But the first item on the agenda is 332 Raritan Avenue, the former Rite Aid, although it looks like a Rite Aid still. And what I wanted to try to discuss is because we know this is a really important site in town for us, and that's a large vacancy to have in town. So I want to kind of go over where we are and a recommendation that we have in terms of kind of things we can try to address the site. So just to kind of baseline as much for anybody who's listening at home, we're dealing with a 15,000 square foot former Rite Aid. 15,000 square foot is a large space in this day and age, especially in a downtown location like this. And this type of use, they're not really returning to spaces like this. And so I've done a little research on what's been happening because Rite Aids have been closing since these Chapter 11 bankruptcies started a couple of years back. If you recall, we felt we were fortunate that we didn't get closed down in that first wave. And so they are kind of sitting out there on the market, both in New Jersey and elsewhere. So we want to be as proactive as we can about what we can do to try to kind of move things forward and not have a vacancy downtown any longer than is necessary. So I also took a kind of an assessment of our, what tools we have, just to be clear, you know, looking at redevelopment hat on for a minute. Just, this is a little different than, for example, with the Super Fresh or what was this Stop and Shop situation. We decided to use the redevelopment law. We studied, decided to see if it was determined to be an area in need of redevelopment. It met the criteria. Chris Cessenza, our planner, did the study and went to the planning board. We declared it an area in need. And then we kind of laid out some options for the property with the goal of getting a grocery store back. And fortunately, we were successful. We don't have the full redevelopment tool available on the Rite Aid site. There's a unique history here. It was in our 2005 redevelopment area and redevelopment plan. There is a downtown redevelopment plan that dates back to 2005. But at some point, I don't have the exact date, there were some negotiations between the borough and the Rite Aid, and it was agreed upon and settled that Rite Aid would be removed from the redevelopment area and the redevelopment plan. So the full suite of redevelopment tools are not available to bring to bear, like, for example, at the utmost, you know, financial incentives, like pilot agreements, things like that, not on the table at this time for the site. And Chris, not to put words in your mouth, you know, but you might want to suggest, we did look at, would it meet the criteria right now? And I mean, what was your assessment of that?
Yeah, so to answer your question, yes. So back in 2005, it was declared an area need along with many other properties in 2010. So only a few years later, through litigation settlement, it was removed. So lost that building. By 2016, we did area-wide area in need of rehabilitation designation, which applies to all parcels in town, including Rite Aid. So under that rehabilitation, we can't still do a redevelopment plan.
Right, so you're jumping ahead of me a little bit. I wanted to just, we don't know that the site as currently, now that Rite Aid's out of the picture, I'm assuming the settlement agreement, but...
In a perfect world, you would go back to studying a property and just a quick look at it. You don't think, would it wait several years before that could be possible? Could it wait two years for vacancy to use criteria B by the completely vacant land for 10 years to determine under criteria C? And then issue of the application on wholesome working conditions, it's unlikely for a recent renovation. So I think we're stuck not being able to use the redevelopment, the full suite of powers.
Right. So just wanted to make that clear. It kind of differentiates it a little bit from what our past experience was with the loss of the grocery store. So just in terms of some of the research that I did, looking at what is happening to these Rite Aids, the types of uses that we're seeing. And I got this out of like some articles from CoStar, which is a big commercial brokerage, like Dollar Generals, Dollar Trees, Planet Fitness-type businesses, and healthcare, urgent care uses. And actually, in talking this over with Chris recently, we were even discussing, we touched and had that exact same thing. There was a CVS that closed in their downtown and it got converted to an urgent care. So those are, and you could probably, and I should mention, daycare uses is somewhat a trend. And there is an example of one actually in, I always want to call it Hamilton, it's on Hamilton Street in Franklin, is a Rite Aid converted to a grocery store. So grocery store into a daycare, excuse me. So what I, the reason I even bring all that up is I wanted to look at, okay, what is permitted now under the underlying zoning for the site? Our central business district zoning, which is what this site is in, currently, thinking about some of those other types of uses, doesn't permit medical office use, does not permit daycare use amongst others, also doesn't permit some kinds of entertainment uses, which might be something we'd like to see downtown. And as it happens, Chris and me and Retuja have been kind of looking at the CBD zoning kind of on a parallel track when this happened. So we kind of knew what was in, what wasn't, what wasn't. So right now, our underlying zoning doesn't really allow for those types of uses that we are seeing more commonly kind of come to term with Rite Aid conversions. The, one of the other challenges I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of is the cost to retrofit Rite Aids is sizable because they're very unique layouts, especially if you want to divide it up, you have to put utilities on both sides of the building. So one of the challenges for the property owner is finding an end user that's valuable enough to warrant and want to make those kind of upgrades to the building. So just trying to give you a sense for kind of the issues that we're facing, trying to think about what could happen here. And I should mention that the underlying central business district zoning does allow for a mixed-use building on the site as of right. But in my conversations with the property owner, which have been very frequent, they looked at that a while back, even before the closure, and they told me they needed financial, you know, pilot, some kind of thing to make the project pen out for that. True or not, we didn't bet that in any kind of serious way, but so right now, the sense I'm getting is that's not on the table in terms of a kind of a total kind of tear down and start over from scratch on the site, at least as far as the property owners concerned. So I just wanted to kind of cover some of those things. So in looking at what the tools we do have, we still can, as Chris said, do a redevelopment plan for the site whereby we could think about some of these additional uses that we might want to allow in order to encourage reoccupancy of the building sooner than later. And so the other advantage of the way I look at the site, this is kind of an abnormal situation for our downtown, a 15,000 square foot site. And I think it's worthy of kind of study in this plan and consideration of plan, but it would also allow us to weave in, if we go to a redevelopment plan approach, the easement that we would like to connect the back of our parking area on South Third through to South Fourth, so that we could encourage that negotiation by creating additional valuable uses that the property owner would have access to. So there's a lot of kind of pieces on the board, but I guess where I've come to, and I think in talking with Chris, it's fair to say, where we've come to is we'd like to consider the potential of a redevelopment plan for the Rite Aid parcels, which I should tell you includes the building that fronts Raritan, but also all of the parking basically in the rear. In fact, parts of the parking that you might even think are Borough parking lot are actually the Rite Aid parking lot. So where we would focus more on permitted uses and the creation of the easement. With that, I want to kind of talk to, have Chris talk a little bit about some of what we're thinking in terms of the zoning that we think might make sense, the types of uses, but also some of the provisions that we wanted to build in to make sure it maintains the frontage on Raritan and things like that.
So this will be a redevelopment plan that would provide for, as the base zoning, a lot of the uses that we talked, used in the downtown tracks, the kind of modern updating uses for downtown, but to use overlay zoning to allow for really expanding the uses beyond that for the use that are more likely impractical for a building of this type, the Hulk in building, 15,000 square foot, White Elephant, is what it is, the terminology we use. It's hard to release that unless it's a high-end user again. So that would be medical, which could be urgent care or surgical facilities, which is a need in town, especially if you have closures along the river due to storm. So that's a good need to have locally. A daycare facility, which is not permitted downtown, technically, and there's several that downtown, pre-existing non-imporn, but this is the perfect size. My son goes to a Kiddy Academy, that's the size of building that they use, has good parking, although they would need to create outdoor play area that's inside, that's something they can deal with at the site. Other uses include retail, which is already permitted. In a perfect world, we will find three uses to divide that store into three different spaces. That's unlikely, but it could still happen. We're not preventing that from happening. So, and I think it's really come down to those additional uses that are not permitted in CBD zoning, which is primarily like a daycare and a range of medical uses along with healthcare-supported uses, gym types of uses, and so on and so forth. So the idea is that to use the overlay zoning, but in order to use overlay zoning, you have to enter an agreement. And that's when you kind of grab the ability to use the easement access. We can also set design standards that we thought about, which primarily make sure the building still has a front door on Raritan. It's a, you know, again, not much openness, and that's, we got the best that we could get about 15 years ago. It's a decent-looking building for a Rite Aid in downtown. But the idea, since the parking's in the back, the fear that we have is they're going to turn their back to Raritan Avenue. So the idea is putting the design standards to require that front door access as well as visibility and to not require, but encourage the ability of taking the wings, maybe the first few feet of it, to put some smaller stores if there's appetite for, not going to require it because they may, that might kill the project, but encourage them to make the smaller stores in front of the larger format. That's really basically what it comes down to. It's really a zoning strategy. So this would be a very inexpensive plan if you gather, it's sort of like a rezoning strategy to open it up to use their practical for this building type, as well as the ability for the borough to maintain a streetscape vibe along the Raritan Avenue, streetscape as well as to get access from South Fourth to South, or just like we did at the Super Fresh site, require continuous access from South Fifth to South Fourth, which is great because you're not relying on Raritan Avenue frontage for driving. So getting that secondary access without using Raritan Avenue has been an important part of our redevelopment planning.
Only other thing I'd mention, because I know it's come up as important to all of us here, and I'm sure those in town, the art windows that are there, we'll also make sure those are protected and we make sure that that gets woven into any final plans for the site, because I know those are important. And the community bulletin board there as well. So the thing I should have mentioned earlier, as Chris was talking, I realized I hadn't, was I had mentioned I'd been talking with the property owner and they've reiterated the uses that I said were kind of predominantly seeking out stores of this size, the Dollar General, Jollar Tree type options. And he has been approached by a couple of childcare uses as well as medical, specifically kind of a surgery center type use. So there is some traction there, at least from the broker and his perspective, that they think there's, this would actually facilitate leasing up of the property. So I just thought I should mention that as well. So that's pretty much, and I know some of this wasn't, but yeah, I thought, I thought maybe it would be an opportunity to ask questions and talk into a little bit.
Question, Jason?
Just to confirm, you said earlier that the way it's zoned right now, in terms of the likely uses of a property of this size, the options, the more realistic options would be something like a gym, a daycare, entertainment possibly, the medical use, or like a Dollar Tree or Dollar General. But the...
Unfortunately, we don't get to pick the chain.
And you'd also said that, you know, the zoning wouldn't allow for most of those, but as of right now, like Dollar Tree.
The zoning allows for Dollar Trees.
That's what I was trying to confirm, like that would be.
It's all retail uses.
It's permitted use, retail.
If Walgreens wanted to come in and fill that spot, they could do it as a right.
Just in terms of the more realistic ones that are likely to open up, like, so that's the one that they could do that as of right. So if we were to fail to act tonight, that's, there's nothing that we could do to stop them from, like, just moving forward with that, they'd have no other option, so.
Well, that would be, or they could just let it sit there and do nothing. That's, you know, that's another fear I do have.
For the two years. I'm certainly in favor of opening it up to these other options.
Noted.
I agree with Jason, I am too. I mean, I think this, this seems like a situation that is, could be ripe for redevelopment plan, particularly because you have an existing, you have an existing property owner who holds the liquor license.
I don't, that is more of a clerk question, they do not. The property owner, I can tell you that, I know that. I believe that that's in process, Rite Aid owned it and may still own it, and it's in the process of being potentially bought and transferred, but I don't believe the property owner is in the mix.
The idea, I'm not crazy about pilots in general, abstractly, but since there's no alternative, and I think we've all looked, this does seem like a really good opportunity for an existing property holder. I have one more thing. What happened?
No, 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 go ahead. I have the gap, I'm holding on to it just in case.
No, no, I know, I think this is a really great opportunity for an existing property holder in town to reinvest in a prized corner property. You know, something that's really meaningful to downtown in the future. I mean, this, this corner is an anchor. And I think, you know, I think if we have an opportunity to make something really wonderful out of it, and that benefits the square, then that's really good. I just have one more question. What is the, what are some of the, what are some of the uses that we would like to see there that are not allowed?
So the main ones I would suggest, if, based on my research, if we're comfortable with medical, like urgent care or any other kind of medical office, daycare type uses. And then things we've been talking about in the CBD discussion were kind of, for example, the idea of a Yestercade-esque business is not currently permitted. So when I say entertainment use, that's kind of what I was referring to, there's probably a more precise way to refer to those uses. Chris, was that?
I use indoor recreation.
Indoor recreation facilities. I believe gyms are permitted.
I'll double check, but we'll make sure it's in there.
Yeah, yeah. So, so there, but it was, it was those primarily like for a use this size, like our CBD zoning is targeted at smaller, because most of our downtown is smaller storefronts. So a lot of those uses that are permitted probably wouldn't naturally lend themselves to the 15,000 square foot footprint. Restaurants are currently permitted throughout the zone, so that wouldn't be, but that hasn't emerged as a big opportunity, I think in part because of the conversion costs to doing so and the upsides or downsides and the lack of a liquor license.
Gyms are not permitted.
Oh, they're not?
But we've been putting them in into our downtown plans as a modern updated use.
Thanks.
So that would carry.
That would be, that would be an example of something that we would suggest, including in the plan in terms of permitting. That's consistent with the other downtown plans we've done. We have them downtown very successfully, and it is one of the types of uses that, I will tell you, that they did not mention that as a potential use having, they haven't been approached, but for all I know, they did.
Be proactive.
But I think, I think we should, the more is better. Options are better than, more options is better than.
I think there's interest, you know, I think, I think probably solicited interest at various points for that type of use.
You might be right.
Yeah.
And this site is unusual for our town, as you know, because it does have probably more parking than it needs for almost any conceivable use in that building. So it makes it attractive in that way. I hate to say that the parking is attractive, but it does for the end users, it is an attractive feature.
It snows and you live there, yeah.
House member.
Just a couple of clarifications. The designation that we're thinking about doing this, we're not contemplating a pilot necessarily for this, correct?
No, we cannot use that.
That's what I thought, I thought that we were prevented from using a pilot, so just to clarify that. And then the other thing is, I know you guys have been talking about expanding it throughout the CBD in terms of expanding the potential uses. Would this be just for this area or would the expanded uses be in other areas? Is it just going to be in this particular?
So this redevelopment plan is only for a Rite Aid site, which is good because we don't want to expand medical office ground floor everywhere.
Right.
But on that token, we are talking about that type of situation generally through CBD, expanding uses generally all over CBD, to a certain extent C-zone, which is more upper Raritan, Woodbridge. And we'd be talking about medical office too, is there an issue with them on the ground floor? No, but not on them in drag, like those types, so we're having those conversations.
I only mentioned it because it was actually fortunate, we had already started kind of analyzing the permitted uses. And so when this issue came up about, you know, trying to find an end user that would fit a 15,000 square foot platform, that, you know, we already kind of knew where we had some gaps. And so, sorry if I confused things by mentioning that analysis. We'll be coming back to you and the public with a more fleshed-out proposal for the CBD zoning.
I'll just pop up and say, I'm in favor of this, it's a really good option for us to do, I think. It helps us work with this landlord and then shows others that we're ready to work with you and try and find the best solution, so I'm in favor of it as well.
Phil?
Just a couple of brief observations. One, the plan would clearly include it as a benefit to the borough that we get the easement that would connect our lot with the other one. In connection with that, is it possible, especially if the new users, because of the scene, the site is basically overparked. And anybody who's been going there for many, many, many years knows some of the issues with the back parts of the parking lot where people roll their, you know, 1975 Lincoln Continental apartments, well, term, there's a lot of other uses. And if you look at, I drove through it a couple of times in the last couple of weeks. There's probably good 15 or 20 cars that are parked there on a regular basis. Could we use perhaps our easement in connection with that side of the parking lot, which would be adjacent to the municipal lot, where we do own the additional properties now as well, to broaden up public parking or perhaps include a public parking piece to that and as well as get the easement so that we can move forward with the South Third.
I will talk with Joe about how that could potentially work, but I would say in my conversations, that was not something that would be very well, I have been thinking about, you're talking about that one section kind of that backs into our properties, potentially, at least on Fridays, having use of it so that it can support vendor parking, for example, for the farmer's market and talking about that. They're very cautious about protecting future users of the property or their own redevelopment potential. And so to totally give over to public, I think it might be a deal breaker, but we can certainly have that conversation. And I think there's a certain amount of reality, like it's going to happen anyway. Like, I mean, to your point, one thing we did start looking at with arterial, or if we're going to connect through, when we connect through, how would we potentially lay out? And we actually would add additional spots by reconfiguring the parking in that, not our property area, if we can come to an agreement on that. So they would actually end up with more spots potentially with the improvements that we're proposing.
In relation to that, I would, I would really need to see what a plan for through traffic would be there, because especially depending on the uses you put there.
Right.
Like a daycare with an express lane from third to fourth, doesn't seem to be extremely practical.
Well, but, let me just say, we're with you on that and we're trying to design it in a way that discourages the cut-through feel. It's got a jaw, it's got a jaw so that it's not just a straight shot to.
Like it is now, like it was in 1999.
So that's one of the ways, but those are all the things, like, you're right, and why Chris mentioned, when we look at the, whatever use comes up, if they're going to be making changes, especially to the exterior, and if it was a daycare, they probably would have to, because they'd have to provide recreational space, then that goes to site plan. We're going to, it's going to have to be a much more detailed proposal and we'll all have to be convinced that it's safe, to your point.
Well, I think that there are a lot of different ways to negotiate something that allows us to use the parking in that particular section. Unless and until redevelopment comes along, where you vacate, you don't necessarily have to take it in perpetuity, it's very easy to do.
Fair point.
So I would like to see that included in the planning, because.
You can certainly reference it in the plan.
Or we get.
I would recommend we encourage it.
Yes.
And reduce park requirements so that if there is a shared park, it doesn't trigger the need for the user to go back and forth to benefit the borough. Just more flexibility and be proactive.
Yeah, because given the floor space on the prior usage, there was always overparked, so I think there's room to do that.
Totally agree, if we're talking about the existing building.
Yeah.
I think that's a fair point.
Okay, that was my concern. I do, I do support it. I think we have enough vacancies and we don't need this one this big, and the opportunity to actually bring something in that's of service to residents, not just in a retail setting, I think is a real benefit.
I just have a quick, there's just a quick follow-up, so no pile, so we're not discussing piles.
We can't, because we don't have a redevelopment area.
So what, so for our economic development team, what other incentives, I guess, what other developer incentives are there?
The zoning.
The zoning. And then, so can, are we able, are we thinking along the lines of potentially pairing them up with a developer? So they, because it sounds like, it sounds like, you know, the burden would be on, I mean, if the zoning is just the thing, how does that, how does that incentivize them financially, I guess?
By, by the types of, the daycare uses, the, the medical uses are higher rent-paying uses in general, likely they just pay better rent. So that's part of the incentive to get them to participate and enter into our easement agreement. What I was trying to say before, which maybe got muddy, by the way I delivered it, was they explore the redevelopment potential for the site previously, and they, by their back-of-the-envelope, with the taxes, they were saying they would need a pilot in order to do a mixed-use type of redevelopment, with or without a development department. And so, without the redevelopment area designation, that's not even on the table.
So how does that work then, though? If they're going to enter, if they decide to redevelop the site based on these potential parameters, wouldn't they have to have an operator in mind in order to be in?
In order to be incentivized, in order in order just to break ground on redevelopment in the first place?
Yeah, I guess.
Does that work?
I guess, in this case, it's, I would think of it as like what happened with Super Fresh, it ended up being, we did a redevelopment plan. We did have the financial tools to incentivize the operator, but it was a rehab of the existing building. This one, they would need the, in order to enter into a, let's just assume it's gonna be a rehab of the existing building. For this part of my answer to your question, then they would, to take advantage of the additional zoning overlay. Of these additional uses, we have to enter into it, we'd have to have an operator. They wouldn't bother to get into a redevelopment agreement with us unless they had an operator. And then we would have to execute that redevelopment, uh, agreement.
With the easement.
With the easement part attached to it, and then they can move forward with their negotiations with their. You know, lease lease agreement, if they're gonna make improvements to the inside of the building, and this is actually something that Chris was contemplating with Joe. Do they have to go to the planning board if it's just a renovation of the building on the inside?
No, unputable.
Or not, and we're, we haven't answered that question right now, we're thinking, no, but if it was a daycare where they're gonna be putting a playground or doing something. That would trigger some additional review by the planning board, but that's, those are things we're trying to sort through with Joe. To figure out, but basically, it's a zoning strategy using the redevelopment rehab area tool.
Sure.
The other part of it is that to be able to have the high value use that they're looking for. That we're providing through the redevelopment plan, it's basically a zoning strategy. Right now, if they were to do it, they would need a used sparing to site plan, I mean, that alone is off cost like fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, it's just money to go.
And you're just hoping that the zoning board sees it your way.
This case, we're being proactive, we'll allow it, and if you need to change your parking lot, then go for a typical site plan. But if you don't, this is change occupancy, just get your building, but we still have the easement. So it's adding flexibility, putting more money into building improvements.
That makes a lot of sense, and somehow, I can't say I'm surprised that Highland Park's static zoning was, commanded lower. Lower income users, that's, that's not surprising, um, however, uh. Uh, so how would that work then, though, if they, if we change the zone? What I'm getting at is that if we have our fingerprints on this, you know, we're gonna wanna make it better than what we started with, right? So and that, and to me, that means a better use, you know, than a dollar store or 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 surgery center. So that's the incentive for me is that, is that, does this, will this get a better operator in there for a long term lease? Something like a daycare, the things that we think will bring more life to the downtown, rather than just an office. And that's, and that's kind of where I'm.
Well, I guess, you know, the the discussion we're having is, I guess, the types of uses, the ones that. Seem to be a higher value are a lot, some are medical. Um, and I don't think we can be so parse the zoning so specifically to say. This kind of medical office, not just like I can't pick this dollar tree versus this dollar.
But then why, what what's the incentive for us to to do this even further than now? If they can get their own operator in there?
They can't because they don't have the zone.
But if they can get a, but they can, but they can, so medical.
Medical's not allowed under the.
Boom, okay.
The only thing that's currently allowed is stuff like retail, like say the Dollar Tree or something like that.
Even.
Daycare, medical facilities and Planet Fitness or Fitness Center is not allowed currently.
So.
So these are the exceptions that would be made.
These are the kinds of things that we're, we've been looking at. That if we think that they make sense for our downtown, it sounds like you're not in love with the medical use, and I get that, but that, these are things that. We could bring to the table to incentivize, A, the 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 refilling and the rehab of the building for the use. Securing those windows more in perpetuity, because I think that's actually linked to the writing. Not necessarily to the structure, so these are things that we can build into this plan. So that if they want the benefit of those uses, then we make sure these things get negotiated in. Um, and so it kind of lays, this is a much more refined tool than trying to figure out a zone. Especially because we don't, we really think these additional uses are kind of, that we're proposing with the exception of maybe. Indoor recreational uses, which I think could be probably throughout the downtown potentially. But I would specifically say the medical and the daycare uses, I wouldn't suggest we just permit them all over the place. A, there's not a really good spot, and B, that's not something we wanna see over and over again downtown. Um, and it also, the the plan allows us to. Make sure we reaffirm the importance of that front entrance and some other things, to just really drive home that this is. Regardless of whatever is in that building, the front is the front, and it feels like the front.
So you can't rule out a movie theater then?
No, it would be a permitted use, I would call that indoor entertainment right there, um, so, for sure. But again, they don't tend to make money for operators.
Just saying, great uses.
I I totally hear you, but yeah. So really, the zoning is the tool we have to hopefully leverage. A, a new use of the building more quickly. And to get our easement addressed in a more expedited way. We have explored other options for the easement and we are gonna be considering those as well. But this to us was the most collaborative and probably win-win approach to the easement as well as to, um. You know, while, you know, do I think that building's perfect? No, would I love to see redevelopment there one day? This doesn't preclude that redevelopment in fifteen years, but it would be nice to have a stable tenant on the anchoring that corner for us.
And and just to share with you, a few, maybe about a year ago, when we were talking to the property owner, they were talking about that they're interested in doing some redevelopment, but. It's not now.
Yeah.
It's in the future.
Got you, um, my only and last, last thought is the the liquor license, I don't know if there's a there there, but I I'm not sure if that's something that can. Whatever, wherever that lands, I mean, somebody's gonna be going to appreciate, you know, having that, and I don't know how, I don't know who's gonna acquire it or if Rite Aid is gonna. Sell it or how, what what happens there.
I haven't. What I've gathered, the liquor license is is not, it's a package license, it's not a pour license.
Right, okay.
So it doesn't help a restaurant.
Right.
It's it's another, it's a liquor store.
Right.
Um, so, um.
Unless even that one another liquor store.
Right, which, you know, we had one, we could have another one, you know, the Rite Aid had it, I presumably successful. One in the back there, so yes, and I have been trying to track, but it's hard, it's all done in A B C land. Not easy to get your hands on, but I have been in touch with the property owner who is not expressed. Been in the mix on that, mainly because I think the end users that they're looking at don't need one.
Thank you.
Can I make a question? Yeah, what, um, since we're exploring urgent care, what will be, well, I guess I would say, what are the permitted hours? That's allowed there now for urgent care, would that be normal operating hours or?
Chris, I'm not as familiar with how specific we are with.
Pre pandemic, what was the hours of the 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 writing?
Well, they were, they've been twenty four, sometimes, most urgent cares, I'll just say, tend to be till eight ish, you know. Or something, seven to eight, seven A M to P M, which I would imagine, do we typically, Chris? Put, I know some uses we do have kind of hours of operation, I just don't know downtown.
Planary beverage sales.
That, but that's a lot, largely, you know, we've had that conversation, let's not do that one now.
I don't think we have been restricting hours.
No, it's it's just, we, I think personally, the reason I like an urgent care over a medical center. Is I think they would have later hours and add a little more dynamism to the downtown people coming and going. You know, at later at night versus a typical medical office, which might close around six.
That's a good.
You know, um, and similarly, why I would prefer an urgent care over a daycare, because again, we know they don't stay open super late either. Um, and they tend to be by necessity, a little more walled off because they're protecting children, and they have to have a lot more security and things like that. So there are things we have to manage, but I think. The reason I'm pretty comfortable with the Rite Aid building being repurposed in these. The Rite Aid building reads like it's closed off to me anyway, like even though it has a front door, it's not a particularly welcoming. Inviting building, you know, it is what it is, and I do agree, it is a better Rite Aid than many I've been in, but, um. You know, so I don't think we're losing anything, you know, could it be way better a hundred percent? But I think, you know, those uses can work in that frame. Um, and I think the hours of operation, from a downtown perspective, more is always better. Having lights on, activity, things like that is is a plus, just for everybody who is open at night downtown.
Safety too.
Yeah.
I mean, they, I guess they can have their, I guess, security lights or so that they would leave on in case there's. An intruder or whatever, please have to look in, so I would prefer to see a daycare there than a medical use. Um, we have almost every fill of healthcare in town right now, from pediatrician to eye doctor to dentist. To chiropractor, um, and and then the way like we just heard, you know. Our, I guess, on the federal level with all the vaccine mandates, where we're going with that. I just think, yeah, where we're not going, and then with us, the borough purchasing Yellow Brick Road. Um, you know, if any business operator that's here, if they, you know, study the town and just call around a few daycares. They would know there's three to six month waiting list, so, um, I think that a daycare is. Uh, the lifespan of a daycare here in town is. I see it going much further than a urgent care, and that's why I asked about the hours, because. Doctors' office normally will have a few, um, late hours. Um, throughout the week where they will stay till almost seven o'clock at night, where we have a urgent care that's a little open. To additional hour, that's, you know, most people come at urgent cares, need some kind of medical form filled out or so. Well, I'm going to Robert Wood for that.
I I I I guess, can I just cut you off for one second, I'm sorry, but like. We're trying to present kind of a suite of options, just like we do with zoning in general. You know, we all have things that we would prefer over others, um. You know, so I guess, are you saying you're not supportive of?
For a daycare.
Yeah, that that's good.
But we're saying that we're looking at all options, we're saying we're looking at all options, not just to pinhole us. Pitching hole ourselves into one, so it could be medical, it could be fitness, it could be retail use, and it could be daycare.
Yeah, 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 I know, but I'm I'm versus that, we we no longer have Yellow Brick Road here, so. We never had a urgent care, so what I'm saying, all of those parents and families were displaced. Also, with the families we're trying to attract here, we're not trying to attract empty nesters. We're we're trying to attract attract people that are trying to expand their family and we want them to stay here, or they're inherited a home. The, this is the service that we're trying here, I get urgent care as well too. In the in the square mile radius, how many, I mean, Robert Wood Johnson, we can walk to at this point, but. Um, I mean, urgent care is on the list, but it's not in my top, top ten, it's at ten.
So if I hear you correctly, you're saying that you would, your priority at this moment would be. From a list of one to four that we have, a daycare would be your priority, and then, but you're not excluding all the other options.
I'm not excluding, because I don't want it, empty haunted house. But, yeah, so I just wanted to say that.
Gotcha.
So your answer is yes to the four options that we have on the table?
Yes.
What's your highest priority is daycare?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure.
Um, uh, I was just gonna say that I think that the best thing is the biggest suite of options. And I would just make an argument that that, and it's not an argument, because we, daycare is great. But I also think there's a real value of having an urgent care, um, over a surgeon center, but urgent care, and I know we can't pick and choose, and I know we're. We're going with the broadest option as possible, I do think an urgent care, especially one, and even if it is late, that's where, you know, your kid wakes up with a hundred and three fever. Take him to the urgent care, and and I think that there's a, there's a interaction that can be really valuable to to folks with an urgent care.
Okay.
I, yeah, I mean, I I understand what, um, Council President. Saying, um, regarding the priorities of the neighborhood, that's a very good point. Um, that if we are going to be doing redevelopment, families are gonna be moving, there are gonna be a lot of kids. But I also understand that it's not really necessarily our choice as to what business is actually gonna open up. We're just expanding the options the owner of the property has. Um, but I was thinking in terms of the urgent care center, uh, which again, I don't have a particular preference, um, but. I would like to just have a business and something going in there that's gonna benefit as many people in town as possible, whatever that may be. But if we do have an urgent care center, we do have two pharmacies in town that will actually benefit. Um, from having a urgent care center, you know, somebody's going into the doctor, they're coming out without prescription. There's literally a pharmacy that's gonna be opening up across the street, um, so something like that can possibly piggyback. You know.
You get multiple uses.
Get multiple uses, because people are gonna come out and they're gonna need something, right, they're gonna need something from the pharmacy. And they may have a pharmacy of choice, but it's across the street and down the block, maybe on the way home, pick it up, I unite, pick it up in pharmacy. Um, that's, that's what I was thinking about, that that maybe, it might expand. Exactly, expand opportunities.
So with that in mind, what's your?
I am in support of, of, uh, all four options.
Taking notes, okay.
Sorry, if I if I may just say, it's just a simple question, only because everyone's kind of dancing around it in different fashions, so, like, with the medical, for example, we've talked about. Wanting an urgent care, maybe not so much like a surgical center, so as we talk about like all four options on the table, explaining to medical, you know. It within those, you can have some restrictions. So it's something, and I'm not making any suggestions now, which is something to kind of consider before you actually move forward, so. If your thought was, I like medical in the sense of, I like a doctor's office, I like an urgent care, I do not want a surgical center, because I think that that's too specific. That's something that we may wanna look at to see if it's something that we can maybe expand it a little bit, but not so much, if that's this, the direction that the council wants to go. But in doing so, the first thing that you're trying to resolve is trying to cast as wide an edge as possible to get as many applicants. So just, I I'm just, and that's the only reason I'm just going out there is that, you do have an ability to kind of get a little more micro on this. But the more micro you get, the less ability you're gonna have to have the owner fill the building.
We will have that control in some way through the redevelopment agreement, because in order to get those expanded uses, if it's under the umbrella of medical office. You have to, the redevelopment or landlord or property owner has to enter a redevelopment agreement with the borough. So you have that last moment of going, we like that medical office, but I discussed internally, don't want surgical, you still have that last line of fence in a way. Uh, before entering agreement, yeah, otherwise the plan should be more broad.
I I have a quick question. Why is, I'll get to you in a minute too, why is there, um. Not, why is there not an opening for surgical centers? I'm just asking my colleagues.
I I I think a surgical center is a is a fine use, if we're talking about preferences and little preferences. I think that the urgent care. Would probably have a broader reach within the community, because everybody gets cuts and scrapes, not everybody goes to surgery. And then in terms of hours, it seems to me that urgent care, all the ones I go to are open till nine or ten, so there's a little bit more churn. So that's my my preference, it's not that I'm against a surgical center, it's not that I think it's.
May I mention one thing about surgery, because there was a surgery center that was interested in the spot, so I asked for a little more flavor. One of the things that attracted me to that, that you may like to know, is that they have probably about seventy employees, not all at the same time on the same day.
Right, right.
And they're a high level staff going to lunch.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying you didn't say.
No, 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 I did not say it tonight, so that, to be fair.
No, no.
But that's, so there's, as you can see, you can go back, you know, there's, there's pros and cons. And I guess I get, my personal bias is very much like, sometime, and then some of it is gonna be. What brings the best market, you know, to bear, you know, like, some of it, we don't, you don't wanna. Control too much, because you don't, you don't know what you're gonna be giving up as a result, like, to Aaron's point, narrowing the field too far. Oh, well, we want something that's open this lake, but wow, I never thought about the fact that at the day, they're gonna have forty employees in that building. Or, you know, thirty or whatever it is, uh, eating in town, going on their lunch breaks, so. So there's, 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 there's just.
You're you're in the queue.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, Stephanie?
You're all hold for five minutes, um. Whatever, forgot my thought. Yes, okay, so I like what Erin said, obviously, but. whatever, forgot my thought. Yes, okay, so I like what Aaron said, obviously, but, um, I think also if we're just trying, like he said, casting a wide net, we're opening the floodgates as well too in, at that point. But I didn't know that we still have a final say to kind of what really, I mean, to some. Okay, so.
But I don't want to have, I don't think we want to.
If we said no at that.
I don't think I could go like, no, I don't like that store, I would like this.
Not that store, but when you say medical, medical has so many subcategories.
Well, I guess it'd be helpful to know which one's concerned.
Right, yeah. I think if there's stuff that we don't want, we should probably say.
To me, right.
That's kind of our.
Right.
You know, I think we don't personally think, that, that would be helpful to know. Like, I don't, I can't think of one off the top of my head that I'm like.
Cosmetic surgery center.
Like, go for it. Like, I don't see a distinction between that versus something else. So if there was like a noxious kind of medical use that we were concerned about. I, I can't think of it, but I think to me, that's where, you know, you could get into dangerous territory trying to overly parse things out, you know? You can control for concerns that you might have about, to me, it's more like how the building functions and feels and fits in. Those are the zoning parameters I'm more interested in, and then the uses, as long as they fit within the general envelope we set, you know? That's fair, you know? Uh, that was going to be our approach. But if there was a use that comes to mind that I didn't think about, that I, I would, I would love to know. It didn't occur to us, I'll be honest. And we're just like, it's kind of a medical office, you're going in there, you're getting some sort of a medical attention or procedure. You know, those are the general, kind of what we were thinking.
Yeah, if you don't want, uh, medical offices, like traditional pediatrician's office or whatever, then we could just clarify specialized medical office care, such as, then we can list urgent care, surgical facilities, stuff like that. But if you have a preference of certain types of use, don't want, we need to know now. Otherwise, I recommend keeping it broad.
No, 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 Matt, you're done? Jason?
Okay, just to hear your question.
You went, you jumped then.
Just to your question earlier, I just wanted to say out on the record that I am perfectly comfortable and fine with the surgical center. I may have different preferences of let you go there. I'm sure my preferences are great and really cool, but I would just, I'm in favor of keeping it broad.
I am also. I am too, unless of a question, more of a comment. My, um, uh, like Rite Aid's, you know, all over the state, we're going to have like, you know, dozens of, 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 of new stores that look like Rite Aid still because that's what the buildings look like. I know it's ridiculous. Um, and so I, I think, I think we would probably all be interested in like whatever happens there. If it can look like something that belongs in the downtown for the long term. You know, no matter what, I mean, even, I mean, even if it, obviously it has to have a certain functional design depending on what it is, but if it doesn't, if it's, doesn't have to be safe, it can just fit into the streetscape, you know, because it's a redevelopment plan, it can kind of look. So, because eventually there's going to be something else in there. And.
Agree. And then we were talking about, you know, not that we, we have, we don't have too much to incentivize it, but let's say, the doctor's office didn't need the full fifteen thousand. Well, wouldn't it be nice if, but if it was permitted, they could maybe carve one piece out and do a smaller retail footprint, you know? Those would be all permitted in this plan, you know, and frankly, called out as desirable. Um, because again, more activation on that front, I think, would be, to your point, I think the reason it doesn't fit is it doesn't quite breathe like the rest of the, the frontage downtown.
There's a limit.
Uh, but, you know, there's going to be a limit to what we can make them do with the tools we've got to bring to their own situation. Um, but we can certainly, you know, especially as they design, they're going to have to put this new sign, they're going to have to do some modifications to the front. You know, as what, you know, unless.
Encourage them to carve out small spaces. We did that in a touchroom where a store is literally eight feet deep. And it's like a maker space. They call it Spark for the special improvement. So we created that because the office space kind of couldn't be on the street. So I was thinking bringing that here, say, we're allowed to do it. Doesn't need to be that big. Just tell the landlord.
Think about it. Like, if they don't need the full frontage, maybe you want to think of a porch like this. Um, so we're going to try to be creative about it, but recognizing that the odds are the end user's going to utilize most of the, the space and convert it and.
Any additional questions?
So fi- uh, final, so the categories is healthcare, daycare, that we're making an exception for. Those are the two that.
Indoor. Medical use, daycare use, fitness centers.
Entertainment, indoor entertainment, right?
And, and, uh, yes.
Fitness centers.
Yeah, so, yeah, they, they, that, all three, I mean, even daycare, like, is that also adult daycare? Is that also? Like, what is, like, that's why when we're opening this stuff and something comes there that we don't.
I was considering childcare, but.
I was thinking childcare myself because we pretty much have adult daycare right here.
But when you don't put it in, written down on, it's is up left of the mind to wonder and, oh, I thought that, that was permitted.
Oh, I think we've been talking about child daycare, but do you, just so we're clear, do you not want adult daycare?
No, I, I, I'm just saying that we're, we're just putting open, it's, it's so open that it's, it's any, anything, we have to define these three categories. Even before you said indoor, into like indoor and same, I guess, okay, that's different, but these three categories, like defining them a little, just a little parameters around it. I don't know, if Aaron, I know you have suggested that.
Well, I, I thought Phil had his hand up too. I don't know if he had a genius.
I, I don't think we want to, uh, from, from what I'm, I would suggest that we don't lock ourselves into any particular thing. Because when we were talking about daycare, we're talking about Yellow Brick Road being closing, I think we're talking about child daycare. And the medical use could be expanded out to see what the person who's coming in. The permitted use currently is retail, so like a Donald Tree or any one of those could be in there. And, um, we're looking at a fitness cent, looking at fitness centers as a possible that we will include into this.
Okay, so that is actually child daycare.
Child daycare, because I, I strongly believe in adult daycare right in back of us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but we, we have.
And people come from all over and use it.
And it's bigger.
Yeah, but we have to remember the landlord is just going, he's going to, essentially, he's going to go with the highest bidder, so that's why.
Generally speaking, the medical are the higher.
Bitter.
Years of value, uh, end users. I, daycare depends on which one.
Yes.
It depends on the, you know, the, the.
The clientele that they're going to get.
Of that. So I don't think a Yellow Brick Road price point is going to go there.
Nope.
Just because, like, I afforded Yellow Brick Roads, I know what that was, and that is much more va- of a value to give a lower price point than some of these, uh, other kinds of centers. So some of that is going to be dictated by the cost of renovation and the, in the, in the lease terms, you know, this is going to be a limited, so.
But, okay, I mean, I do, I could be, but I know, and I guess in my world, when I close loads, if it's not, if it's not in there, then it, it, it just isn't happening, you just leave it so, so open.
Zoning is its own art form. It really is. It is what, and you, you can be as specific as you want, Stephanie. And the flip side of that is you are so specific, you excluded something you want.
No, then we, we will be here again and say, hey.
And then we have to amend it, go to the planning board, it's like three.
And time is, time is always.
And there's the enhancement, and that's our loss.
Yeah.
There you go.
So I imagine though, like any, and anything, anything that they, any interest that they have is going to be vetted by the.
They're going to come to us.
We're going to come back and we're going to hear it.
Want to know if it fits, like, we have an open relationship.
What do you think about this?
Yeah, and that has been the case.
Yeah, they've, yeah.
That has happened, yeah, that's.
So that gives me a little more.
A question was asked about the liquor license, although I know it's a poor license, it's go to.
It's not a poor license.
It's, it's not a poor license, it was, it's a package license. And the question was asked, are we interested in a package license? I was like, I don't think so because we have enough liquor stored in town.
Huh?
The question.
It's out there.
It is a package license.
It is a package life, it is on the market.
Yes, it's, it's on the market for sale.
The question is, is are we?
Me, the borough?
Can the borough buy it?
Okay, we can return.
Why would we want to pay a lot of money to?
Yeah.
A poor license.
I don't really want to go down the road of why, I want to know. Right now.
The senior center?
Technically, yeah. Um, I, I think more, you also, by the way, have some ability to approve transfers of those licenses too. Um, so, but it does get a little wonky because of the borough doesn't want to, they can go ABC, peel it or whatever, so it becomes very difficult. If it's, if you want to purchase, the problem is that you're not going by the rate that you sold the license to them, you'd be going by the market rate to take it back. And then secondarily, then it becomes an asset that you've spent money on that. I mean, you would be, I practically would be taking it in to either reissue it to someone else at a complete loss. Or you'd be taking it in to just not allow it back out into the market. So, but, it's something you can do, but I just, there's, there's pros and cons to doing it.
And, and remember, Governor Murphy, two years ago, was looking at this universal, um, liquor licenses for smaller business and stuff like that, so it might be a loss to.
There was an expansion on some liquor licenses and then, but then there were restrictions put on pocket licenses. So they expanded, but now if if the municipality has issued more licenses than what it's technically supposed to have issued, and one of them is a pocket license, when that pocket license expires, it just disappears forever. So that's the, the other caveat to that, is that if it expires and it goes away and it's beyond that, it does, it's like it wasn't there anymore.
Is that, uh, is that, is that an asset to the borough or?
No, so if, if, let's say the borough was allocated fifteen licenses, but you have twenty out there right now.
It's called, you have six.
Yeah.
Just so the public is aware.
You take those, the, the licenses that are over your allocated limit. If those become pocket licenses, they'll expire after a certain amount of twen- appointment. So if, if you're over the limit, when they expire, they just take you back down to your maximum, but you can't ever go back above your max. If you're below your maximum and the pocket license expires, it then transfers back to the municipality, and now that it becomes yours to then reissue to another person. So that we're trying to amend the ABC laws, but as you can imagine, there are a lot of liquor licenses that people spend.
Yes.
Multi-million dollars to procure.
And that's why they were so.
Yeah, so it's hard to unwind.
Mm-hmm. Any additional questions? We're all good? Okay, now it's time for public comment.
Oh, no, we have.
Oh.
Bullet number two.
This is a quick one.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it's all in. Okay, four twenty to four twenty-four redevelopment plan amendment.
Just real quick, I'll turn to Chris in a minute, but just to remind everybody, because Chris reminded me, we, you authorize an amendment to four twenty, four twenty-four redevelopment plan, which was the, what is now the super fresh plan, as I would call it. Uh, a number of years ago, ta- basically take the zoning that we developed, the, kind of the, the alternatives for Raritan Avenue, and bring that across the frontage. Because when we did the area need study, we actually did study the entire.
Yes.
Basically, block from the super fresh forward. Um, so we just want to pick that, and it was mainly because Chris was here.
Yes.
Anyway, I wanted him just to kind of remind you guys what that project is and what he's been working on. So with that.
Really a matter of efficiency, since I'm working on this redevelopment plan for writing. Well, we'll take a permission to do so, prior redevelopment plan for the now super fresh site, extend the zoning, using efficiency, the workload I'm doing, prepare the zoning standards for that, for that project. So. But in terms of the actual, read it on plan, so, yes, as Terry mentioned, we did the area need study, uh, non-combinational, I believe, uh, for the four buildings on the four hundred block of Raritan Avenue, which includes well, what was Wells Fargo, uh, the Park Town Center, involved businesses there, six of them. The Stop and Shop site and the corner landmark building. But we only did a redevelopment plan because we were in a rush to try and get.
Right.
Then we talked about, well, we should think about expanding the zoning, which was basically allowed for four story, maybe a fifth story step back. Um, that sort of strategy with infield building along the street and sort of extend that to the rest of the block. But at that time, Wells Fargo was, I think, going through a, a new tenant, so we didn't really lose the opportunity, but the, the idea of finishing that plan is less important.
It went back burner just because the property was.
Then track C happened, track A. Since, since we're touching writing, he's like, well, you know, I said the other plan, might as well finish.
And we literally, he's, I looked at the, how much we've spent, and he's, he's literally halfway through doing it. So I figure might as well bring it back to everybody's attention. We do think it's good because we don't want to wait till the next change in tenancy, and then we're scrambling to establish the zoning parameters for that. Um, and, you know, but basically, it's a similar approach to how kind of.
More expansive land uses, a little bit more generous bulk standards, but within reason.
But we will not be including these additional use, the, at least the medical and the daycare use.
That discussion's only for writing because that's suitable for writing.
For that, for that site that big.
So, two birds, one stone.
So you'll get a chance to look at that plan when he's done drafting it, but I just wanted to remind everybody we were working on it.
That's awesome. Um, no, that, that, that's awesome, totally support. Um, but since we're talking about it, I don't know if there's a chance to revisit, um, the, um, the owners to see if there's something we can do along the frontage.
I have been talking with them.
It's a unknown conversation.
It's a little bit of a haggle between the property owner and the super fresh, but I know they reached out, I had talked to them and they had reached out to the property owner because the property owner called me, so I was like, oh, good, they actually followed up. So it may take a little time and it may come in phases, but we are still working.
Just for those keeping score at home, we don't like the cars facing right at the sidewalk, we want to create.
It may not be the whole frontage, but at least if we can carve out some of that.
Yeah.
To make it a little more beautiful, maybe even get them a sign closer to the street. That was something we talked about in the plan. So these are all things we're talking about.
Yeah, awesome. Are you talking about specifically like improvements along there or like actual building?
The plan allows right now for actual buildings, so that's now, what we had also, if, 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 remember, we were like three options. Option one was fix up the existing building, that's the option that ended up happening. And in that option, there was a dream, I should say, of a potential like rain guarded along the frontage. I don't think that's practical at this point, but we did talk to them about other ways we could screen the parking and add additional planters, yeah, talking about things. I mean, I will say their landscaping isn't is a little underwhelming, so I don't want to overpromise, but I think we can definitely get some additional things, and they're willing to talk about it, so.
So they express interest in landmark signage?
I want to talk to you about that separately, but potentially, yeah. And since we're looking at the plan, it would make sense to, because I think it would be nice for them to have a little more presence at the street because they are so set back. Um, and I think it would also encourage them to do the improvements we want in the front, if as part of that, they were getting a sign.
If people can see them, yeah.
You know, and they get a little more of a monument sign that has their brand on it, but then we get a little more of a uh, um, strip. I think there will still be some spots, I don't think they're going to go all the way, and also closing the out is something we really want, even if we just do planters or something that we're talking them about, they were bucking.
It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing conversation.
I never, I barely see anybody use it, you know, I don't know why, it's not a big deal, but anyway.
This is very exciting.
Exactly, so, but we should weave that in to, since we're amending the plan anyway, we could, we have to figure out how to, you know, design those parameters for the sign.
Like a nineteen sixty sign we saw decades ago.
Yeah, we're going to go back to it.
Mid-century, it's a throwback.
But it has to be on a big stick and it says food town. It was a food time?
Food town. Food town.
But there was a something.
Or that was a playtime.
It was food time. It was something before. It was food time. I saw the old picture, that's why. Um, so, uh, yeah, has quite a history. And actually, the writing site, there was a grocery store at one point as well. They were right next to each other.
All right. Any additional questions?
That's all we had. Oh, we do have. I was about to pack up.
Anyone?
There are, and I do have a hands up, Mary, so do you want to say your?
Okay, now it's time for public comment. Twenty-one minutes, three minutes per speaker. Person online, please go ahead and speak.
Hold on, uh, it looks like.
Identify yourself.
I have to, Abby Stern Card now. I'm going to, hold on.
I thought it works, since we didn't get comments from the public.
We do, we always have to have a comment, yeah. Abby, can you just say something, make sure you're there?
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Um, so I have been listening to the meeting, very interesting. Um, I wanted to give a little bit of feedback, um, before you make your final decision about moving forward. Um, I don't know when that's coming, but I wanted to make sure that you, uh, were able to hear a little bit. Um, so I understand that the best thing is a full suite of options, and I, I think you should give definitely some more options. I would, um, like to make some comments about the daycare. Um, I, I think my understanding was that Yellow Brick Road partially closed due to the expansion of the pre-K at the schools. And, um, you know, we have a, a market for everything, and the market for daycares should be taken into effect or taken into account. Um, because daycares are struggling. Uh, I don't know that a daycare would be a long term, even if one did come, would be a long term tenant. The goal is for the pre-K expansion to continue at, um, in the school, and I, you know, I hope that there's still conversations happening with that. Um, With the with the Board of Education, so. I really think that, you know, if you're giving the full suite of options, I would, I would ask you just not to include the daycare, I really don't think that it would be good. Um, for that reason, I also think that. Something that can serve the entire community and people can walk into, daycares have a lot of. High security and, you know, it's really important to keep them locked down, so when you're talking about, you know, keeping it open, keeping the door to on Raritan. Kind of. Open to the public in a way, that's not going to be the case with a daycare, I just, I think that spot is really, does not serve. The purpose of a daycare, let alone having to make an outdoor space. So if we're talking about kind of higher value, people participating in the downtown, again, I don't think a daycare is bringing in as many. People working. Let me see if I had other points, I would really like to see something that the entire community can use. Um, and walk into, I think there are some great options you discussed, fitness center, definitely. Um, urgent care, entertainment, I mean, that sounds amazing. For all of those reasons, I would ask that when you're putting the suite. Of options out there that you don't include a daycare, I think it could be a big problem in terms of. Supply and demand in the town and also having something that is sustainable long term.
Okay. Thank you, anyone else?
There are three people on, including Abby, but no other hands up.
Okay, may I have a motion to close public participation?
Mayor, someone just popped their hand up. Shall I? Ellen Witt, if you could just identify yourself for us, please.
Hi, Ellen Witt. Highland Park, I I'm just. Asking a quick question, I just want to confirm that the Immigrant Trust Act resolution could be on the. Agenda at the next meeting for a vote, is that? The plan?
Okay, that's a question, do you have another question, Ellen?
Nope, that's the only one.
Okay. Any additional questions from member of the public?
I don't see any other hands up, man.
Okay. May I have a motion to close public participation?
So, second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Choh-ha.
Yes.
Councilmember Piston.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus.
Yes.
Just want to acknowledge that I heard both questions from, the question from Abby with her recommendation. As we move forward, we'll make, we'll try to make the best decisions for the town. And seeing who comes before us, as it pertains to Ellen's question, that will be on the agenda for October, Jason and his team, um. Human Relations Commission will be working on that and I believe that's going to be on the twenty first agenda. Okay. Any other questions from members of my group? Nope, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Great.
Red flags are up two, one.
Okay. All right, good night, all right. Good night. Sorry.
Yeah.
My pen ran out.